Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoon is absent. Johnson?
Here.
Jean Francois?
Here.
Summers, absent. Witt?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval minutes?
We have two council minutes this evening. It's for June 21st and July 19th.
Motion to approve both. Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
We have one correspondence tonight, and it's for, we received an application for a new liquor license. This is for 28 to 30 West Main Street.
Forward to the police chief and corporation counsel.
And that is all for our correspondence.
Okay, for the good of the city, anyone would like to address this counsel, please step forward. Okay, reports of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to update you on a fun-filled, packed weekend that's coming up in our downtown area. I handed you guys flyers, what's happening. Starting Thursday, we have a variety of events. Along with a movie on our King Street walkway. It's going to be our first movie downtown on the walkway. Friday, Festival Square, Park on North Street by Something Sweet. We'll have entertainment. And this is all leading up to the run for downtown that's happening this weekend. And there's going to be also on Friday night a pasta dinner hosted by ShopRite supermarkets that will be part of the run for downtown event. And then Saturday is the run, beginning at 8:45 right here in downtown. So you can see there's a variety of things happening. This flyer, this is going to be in the paper, Times Herald Record tomorrow. It's going to be on our websites, on the bid website, city website, and so forth. So we're looking forward to a great weekend and a lot of activities for our youth and all to be involved with this weekend. Also, just my reminder that we're still taking applications for housing rehab programs. We have grants and loans for income-eligible homeowners in the city of Middletown. So call our office, 346-4170, and we'd be happy to speak to you, see if you qualify for one of our programs through community development. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Recreation?
Just a couple of quick things. This past Thursday night, the Middletown Cares Coalition met here. They did a Narcan training for all residents that wanted that. That's to help those to counteract the overdose. Also with Middletown Cares, the drug drop box that's in the police station, that is being very successful. A lot of people are taking advantage of putting their prescription drugs in there. And we're just trying to make every available thing we can to help the community keeping things drug-free and getting them the proper services they need and contacting. Kelly's doing a great job. They're also doing their school supply drive. We have a lot of churches, a lot of local businesses, all collecting school supplies. And the end of this month, it'll all come over to the recreation department, and we will be taking all those supplies to the schools for kids that don't have. You'll see there's a couple of resolutions tonight. One is it's $1,000 overtime. It's not additional money. It'll be in that same line item. We are using some of our part-time maintenance guys, just because there's so many extracurricular special events going on. We don't have the manpower to be everywhere on Saturdays and Sundays, so we're using some of our part-timers. So it's not an extra cost. It's just moving it into the right line item. You'll also see a resolution for the mayor to approve the signing of a contract with what's called the geese police. We are looking to try to come with a solution to control the population of the geese in three of our parks. Maple Hill, Watts Park, and Fancher-Davage. It's becoming quite a health concern and a health hazard. There's not a step you can take without stepping in the feathers and the droppings left behind by the geese. So we're hoping that gets supported. We do know the school district has used them and it's been successful. It is off their fields. So we're hoping those geese move without being hurt or harmed, move to more wilderness areas that aren't used by us human beings. And if a couple stick around and float around the pond, that's fine, but not the hundreds. So that's on there as well. And the last thing, I just want to publicly thank all of our summer help. We're winding down. Over 130 of them just did an incredible, incredible job out there. Our pools are still open for two more weeks, and our playground programs will end on Friday. All of our camps are done. And if you're looking for something to do in the fall, come see us, because all the registration's up for the fall. And special events and all that, that'll be out. Our new brochure will be out beginning of September.
Any questions for Chris? Alderman Burr?
Chris, you said two weeks. Is Sproach Street going to close a week early, or?
Yeah, Sproach Street's last day will be actually on Friday.
Okay.
Because we lose our lifeguards. Most of the college students are headed back. But Davage and Maple will be open to Sunday, the 28th.
Thank you, Chris. Corporation counsel?
I have no questions unless there are questions.
Any questions for the corporation counsel? Thank you, Rich. Okay, city clerk?
I just have one thing. I was notified by the Board of Elections that there will be a state and local primary. It's on Tuesday, September 13th, and all the sites will be open in the city of Middletown. Any questions, you can call them, Goshen, or us at our office on where you would be able to vote. That is September 13th, Tuesday. That's all I have.
Questions for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances?
We have a public hearing tonight on a proposed amendment to the code to change the way garbage is disposed of in the Business Improvement District. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 16th, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, 2nd floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed amendment to the code to change the way garbage is disposed of in the Business Improvement District. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed amendment, and this is by order of the common council. It was signed John C. Namchek, clerk of the common council. This was published in the Times Herald Record on August 4th and August 5th, and on the city website. And also, there was a mailing done by the Business Improvement District to the owners in the Business Improvement District.
At this time, the public hearing is now open. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, I just want to give you some background on the purpose of the public hearing since there's no resolution pending in front of you, and also for the, get further information for the public as they come up and make comments. The, we're looking at two different options citywide to pick up our garbage. One is the possible privatization of the municipal pickup, and the other is going to the arm. But in downtown, we, that's citywide. Downtown, we do things a little bit differently. A, we pick up six days a week in downtown at a minimum. B, the, many of the businesses and individuals who live downtown bring their trash to a garbage depot, which was located in the Canal, I'm sorry, in the James Street lot. And it was becoming overburdened, and it was too small, and it really looked horrible. So we looked at different ways to address that situation. And one of the solutions that we have proposed, and part of it has already been implemented, was A, after putting $400,000 into the King Street walkway, and with the possible sale of the King Street building, that we needed to relocate the depot that was in James Street. We did build a, construct a new one in the Canal Street lot. That's a little bit more of a walk. But at the same time, it's more isolated, a little bit larger, and will allow us to encourage some recycling. So in doing so, we also wanted to identify which downtown properties could dump into that facility. We are also proposing two other locations in the downtown area for a similar type depot. One would be in the Masonic Lodge parking lot, to the rear and down the road a little bit for the Masonic Lodge. And the other would be somewhere in the TD Bank area, in the back or in the lower lot of the former TD Bank building. Part two was that the garbage that is put out nightly onto the streets has become, for lack of a better term, a real problem. For the, people are putting garbage out in small little bags, like a little ShopRite bag tied up, or larger bags. There's no containers. Couple things. One, it's dangerous for our personnel to pick up. Broken glass, or needles, or whatever else is in it that they're not supposed to be disposing of that way. But we do have incidents of, it's a dangerous condition. Two, it also looks horrible. Three, the bags get torn and create more litter in the downtown area. So we're trying to address that issue also. As you know, there are more and more people moving into the downtown area. Trash is becoming more and more of a problem. The skateboard park, the bids will be accepted hopefully within the next couple of weeks. We'll bring a lot of people to downtown. The Heritage Trail will be bringing a lot of people to downtown. The new transportation center, a lot of new people to downtown. And we have a lot of construction planned for additional residents. So rather than wait for it to become a crisis, we're trying to develop a new garbage plan for downtown, for downtown pickup. Basically, anyone will, each property will be assigned an address where they can bring their garbage to seven days a week, if they so choose. If they don't, if they would like to put it out in front of their business, or in front of their apartment house, or a combination of both, the mixed use, they would have to put it into a can of some type so that the animals can't get to it, and that they, and that it won't be torn and ripped up on the street. So they have two options, put it out in the can out front, or two, bring it right to the depot where you're, where you're assigned to, your property is assigned to. And that's basically it in a nutshell. The depots will be camered. We do have a lot of out-of-town dumping that we're trying to stop. We also have a lot of people dropping off mattresses, or couches, or chairs. And that's a problem, so that will be strictly enforced, especially with the installation of the cameras. And the other is, is the corner or the litter cans that you see in downtown are not for household garbage. So we see some people from apartments bringing a bag of household garbage and putting it into the, what is supposed to be the litter container. And they're just piling up, say, on the corner of, primarily, I see it a lot on North, and, North and East and West Main. So we need to change the way we do business to keep it cleaner, keep it safer. And also, the idea of all of this activity that will be coming into downtown, and not only in addition to what we're proposing and what I mentioned, but also in anticipation that the $10 million grant is going to result in additional activity in and around the downtown area. So that's the proposal. Not too complicated. And we're looking for some public input to see if we're on the right track, the wrong track, and if there's any concerns from the public that we can address them before we adopt the resolution to move forward. Thank you.
It's time to open up to the public. Any comments?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Dave Madden, and my wife and I own 17 North Street, which has a little restaurant on the bottom floor, three single-room apartments above. I applaud your effort to do this. It's very important, and I completely agree about the unsightliness. Our building, like many of the downtown buildings, the property is the footprint of the building. So if cans or receptacles were required, we would have no place to keep them. If we kept them in the basement of the cafe, then our tenants are going to be bringing garbage to the restaurant. That doesn't seem plausible. So it's just something that we have to consider, that, you know, a lot of the properties are landlocked, and there is not a place to keep receptacles for the, for the garbage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members from the council? Alderman Massey?
I'm certainly in favor of it. I think it is a good idea. And anyone that knows what goes on in about another two months will appreciate the fact that hopefully this will help alleviate the crow problem. And year in and year out, we look for remedies, and this certainly is not going to be the where-for-all for the crow problem, but it certainly will help. And I know the mayor...
Yeah, I can also address... We did anticipate the issue that Mr. Madden raised, and we have looked at other bid districts throughout the, throughout the state, and what some of them do do, especially like in Times Square where they have the largest bid. And one of the options that we are looking at is a standard bag, a heavy-duty standard bag that would have a clear bag for recyclable, or I believe it's a clear bag for recyclables, and a dark bag for trash tied. So there are other options to, to what's being, to what's being proposed to address that specific concern. And Mr. Massey is correct. The crow problem will be here in a few months, and we're going to be talking about it for probably four or five months after that. And one of the issues that, one of the perpetrators of the plastic bags left out on the street, or at least the ShopRite or the light bag, is the crows pulling them apart.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the council? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, move.
Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Questions for the mayor?
I'd like to begin by thanking older woman Ram Cassoon, although she's not here, for the successful crime, Night Out Against Crime event that was held a couple of weeks ago at Davage Park. And that was capped off with the fireworks. The majority of the event was sponsored by different businesses within the community, and it was very well-attended, and Kate and her whole crew did an excellent job. On a, on another front, we have also been the recipient of a, of a grant and a 0% interest loan through New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation regarding the black dirt sewer. As you know, it's a controversial line that we've started out as about a million-dollar project. It's now up to about a $3.8 million project. And so we did look for assistance from the state, and the governor's office notified us a couple of days ago that, excuse me, that we would be receiving a $975,000 grant towards the project and a $2.9 million 0% loan. And this is the one that goes from Presidential Park School through the black dirt area, through Lake Avenue, and over towards Monhegan Avenue. So we're very thankful for that. Chris, and our superintendent of recreation and her committee, we've been working on the skateboard park, final design and final selection of the vendor. A group of us made a trip down to Elizabeth, New Jersey, where one of the final proposers has a skateboard park. We met with the mayor and the recreation staff down there. And we came back with some, with some photos and some information about the success of their urban street skate park. So we're hoping to maybe do one more with California Skate Park. This was a Spawn Ranch Skate Park, and then we'll have, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, a recommendation to the full council on what bid to accept. The big issue of the, over the last few days, as you know, was the Highland Rehab Center on Highland Avenue, and what happened up there. A little history, back in May, on Memorial Day weekend, the power, not the power, the air conditioning system went out. Council knows it, or maybe not all the public knows it, so I'll repeat it. The temperatures reached 102, 103 degrees in some of the rooms. The city was not notified immediately, and eventually, a concerned relative contacted us, and we were able to respond to the incident back in, on Memorial Day weekend. They were working on the system at the time, and they were able to bring the system back up, not quickly, but within a day or so. And they did bring in fans. The fire department came in and assisted at that time. We then notified the state health department, and we also took some action against the owners of the facility in three areas. One was property, the property maintenance code, mechanical code, and the fire code. There were some issues with the elevator at that time, and we were very displeased with the response from the ownership of the facility. They then made a commitment that they would resolve the situation. What we had heard at the time, and I think was verified, that there was a major leak in the system, that the system was old, that one of the two units of 75, or 70 or 75 tons each of air conditioning, one was down, the other was working at a very weakened strength, and were not capable of keeping up. Our, Adam McCary, who deserves a lot of praise for the work he did over the weekend on this, along with Chief Barone of the Fire Department, Lieutenant Welch of the Middletown Police Department, they monitored the situation all weekend. And when it came to this situation, although it didn't get as hot as it did in May inside the rooms, the ownership, or the management of the facility was much more responsive and made some quick decisions, including a declaration of a heat emergency within the facility that activated their emergency response. That meant recalling staff, bringing many staff, and relocating patients from the upper floors that were really, really hot, down to the first floor in the public areas, which were not as hot. But that's only a short-term, a short-term solution. Friday night, they advised Adam that the repair would be completed, in their estimation, by 5:00 a.m. Saturday morning. When it wasn't completed, Adam did contact me. I contacted the county executive, Mr. Newhouse, and we had a meeting Saturday morning and decided that we would approach the Highland Rehab and give them a choice either to do a voluntary evacuation or that we would utilize the court system to order the evacuation. At 11:30, I met with Faith, along with Faith, who runs the, who's the managing director there, along with Adam McCary. And she advised us at about 11:30, 12 o'clock, that the facility would be evacuated on a voluntary basis. Once again, we brought the county executive into the picture. He was able to arrange the ambulance services for some of the clients. At the time, we thought they went to 11 different facilities, but it ends up today. Some of them had to be shifted from those facilities and into others. So the total amount of facilities that people were shifted into is 14. And that is anywhere from Terry Town down in Westchester County, all the way up to the greater Middletown area, with quite a few at the Valley View in the town of Goshen. So we were disappointed that the repair wasn't made, and we also had some concerns about their evacuation plan that they're required to maintain and file. Their evacuation plan included utilization of ambulances for people who were able to get up and walk. As I mentioned, the 10 ambulances were used, or 10 people were transported by ambulance to the emergency facilities, or other nursing homes. But many other people, I think six went with family members, but the balance had to be transported in some manner, and their plan called for an ambulance service. Unfortunately, ambulance services do not operate on weekends, and we were stuck there. So we did contact, I think Adam contacted Dan Higby, or the chief did, either one of them, at Mid-City Transit. And they immediately responded with air-conditioned school buses with chairlifts to assist any evacuation. It took about eight hours to evacuate the remaining people, which is about 76 people, from the facility, many in wheelchairs, to all of these different facilities. So it was a job well-done by the, by the crews. The staff at Highland Rehab was also very cooperative and very caring. You might have seen some of the pictures in Record Online where, you know, some of the residents there were actually in tears. It was very traumatic for them, and had, we had a real major concern about the, about what was happening there. Today, we announced that, after a meeting yesterday between the city attorney and staff, Mr. McCary, and I'm not sure if Chief Barone was there or not, and the attorneys for the, and the ownership, for the ownership of the Highland Rehab facility, that a few things were going to happen. One is, on Sunday, they brought in a huge portable chiller. I mentioned that they had 70 tons of air conditioning workable when the system went down this weekend. The chiller is capable of 200 tons of air conditioning to go into the building. The second thing was a generator had burnt out, the backup generator. They had brought in a backup generator. Another part is that they have hired and retained, at the recommendation of Mr. Smith, Felonzer Engineering, to do a daily monitoring and a spot checks of the operation of the, of the chiller and the air conditioning system. We have had it running, I think Adam told me this afternoon, that they had it operating as low as 69 degrees. The, and it was holding at that level, so they were very comfortable that the systems would be operable. All of the other violations, from the elevators to the other issues that were raised in Adam's report, were taken care of. So they were scheduled to go into court this Thursday. We are going to probably seek a postponement of the court action because we're looking to finalize a settlement, and not a settlement for the court action, but just an understanding so that between us and the operators of the home, that will then be presented to the court and be so ordered by the court that they are going to not only maintain this temporary system in place, but they would then, after the, during this fall, when the weather's a little cooler and they can shut down the air conditioning system, a permanent system would be installed. They've also agreed to design, to begin designing that ASAP, and so that they will be ready to install the complete new system at Highland Rehab in the fall. I think I've covered it all. We haven't filed charges on the latest incident, but we will when Alex is ready to. But we are in no way letting them off the hook for the violations. We're not trying to be punitive, but we insisted on corrective action, so we were able to get the corrective action. We want the, we contacted the state department of health. They will have a person on-site tomorrow. They did their inspections also today. And starting, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, the patients and clients, and I think there are some rehab patients there. That's why I use the term "patients" also. They will start being allowed back into the facility, starting at 10:00 a.m., with a daily monitoring and monitoring reports, and the retention of Mr. Felonzer's firm, and with a new agreement in place that their emergency plan, they do have now a memorandum of understanding of agreement with Mid-City Transit, that if for any other reason the evacuation plan must be implemented, then they have a contract in place with Mid-City Transit to do so, similar to what Park Manor Nursing Home has. That's my report for that. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for Alderman? Alderman Massey?
Just a couple of things. One, piggyback on what the mayor said. I'd like to thank Fire Inspector Adam McCary, Police Lieutenant Aaron Welch, the mayor, County Exec Steve Newhouse, and the Fire Chief Sam Barone. I happened to be at the announcement today, and you can see that there were some people that were involved in it, and they were most grateful. It could have been a much more tragic event. And thankfully, because of the quick action by all the people that I've just mentioned, and many others, and including the staff of the nursing home. Our most vulnerable members of society, this should never happen again. And hopefully, from this point on, it won't happen in the city of Middletown. But I do want to thank the people that were involved, and there were many, many others, including the staff and the families of the people that were directly involved. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Kate for a great job she did in Night Out Against Crime. It was a big success. And thank all the vendors, which gave their time, and Flyers, everybody. And then, Chris, I want you to thank your staff for a great summer we had. Our parks are looking good, clean. And thank you and all the staff involved. Thank you.
Johnson?
Thank you. I'll also thank older woman Ram Cassoon. She makes a tough job look easy, but it's not easy by any stretch of the imagination. And I'll echo the comments of the mayor and Alderman Massey for all the staff that helped with the emergency this weekend. It could have been a lot worse than it was, and they made it as good as it could be. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I also thank the police department, the chief. That night out, they were very good at talking with the community and making sure that everyone kept a conversation going, and it was very good that way. Coming down to our constituents' meeting last week, you know, it's a short drive down, and I would say every other house, Monday night is in the second ward when we set out our trash, and every other house had cardboard and cardboard boxes and cans and bottles. And, you know, basically, half of what I saw was recycling, and people, it's not that hard. hard. Just look at the list, put the recycling out on Thursday night for recycling, and put your garbage out on Monday night, and come on. You know, I...when I moved to Austin, Texas back in the '60s, we were separating our garbage and putting out recycling. I mean, we can't be that out of touch. So I'm asking people to make the effort and help. And also at our constituents' meeting, we had a suggestion about the dogs, the border collies, the goose police. Separate from that, Chris had already acted to bring them in, but I've heard they've been very successful. I know Yell uses them up at Orange Regional, and I heard that the school system uses them, and they're very effective, so...but they, unfortunately, they're very effective at chasing all the geese to our parks. So hopefully now, they'll also be discouraged from being in the parks, and it should make a big difference. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois?
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met this evening. We had a discussion about several topics. We have one resolution that we will be voting on tonight, and the other two will be forthcoming in our next meeting. And again, Kate did a wonderful job with the crime out against night. And Chris, you're doing a great job with the park, so appreciate all your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey calling on the city of Middletown residents and business owners to adopt the Think Differently initiative to assist individuals with special needs and their families.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
I just want to say that a lot of communities have done this. Orange County has already passed that. I know Kingston, a lot of other cities, and it really is just about acceptance of everyone for who they are, and it just absolutely makes sense to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize three fire police members to attend the New York State Chief Expo, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to schedule a public hearing on September 6, 2016, at 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of considering requests by Citizens Communications Company for a cable franchise to offer cable video services in the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
I just want to be sure. Now, this is separate from the application by Frontier for a cable franchise?
No, this is a redo of the Frontier.
It's a redo of Frontier?
Yeah.
Okay.
Apparently, there was not proper notice given to Time Warner.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to approve a block party on Sunset Street and close Sunset from Highland Place to Highland Avenue on Saturday, August 20th, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize Bonnie Bernaski, Commissioner of Assessment, to attend the educational seminar in Lake George, New York, September 18th through September 21st, which is all...all the incurred expenses will be reimbursed by the city, by the State of New York Real Estate Property Services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $1,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2016 budget to cover overtime costs incurred by seasonal maintenance staff.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to increase non-union full-time wages 2.75% effective January 1, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, September 6th, on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 29 to 35 North Street and 15 to 25 East Main Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $20,000 within the 2016 budget to fund financial expenses associated with the energy performance contract.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to close streets for the 157th Annual City of Middletown Fireman's Parade, which will be held on Saturday, September 10th, at 3:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to close streets for the 157th Annual City of Middletown Fireman's Parade, which will be held on Saturday, September 10th, at 3:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the goose police to assist in controlling the goose population in our city parks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize Richard Gertrun to attend the Nikon Fall Training School in Saratoga Springs from September 12th through September 15th.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to accept a donation in the amount of $300 from Nick Pupo Plumbing in support of Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize an emergency purchase of nine new emergency exit doors at the Paramount Theater for an amount of $43,000, including installation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $49,863.96 from various operating accounts in the 2016 water sewer DPW budget and charge them to the capital accounts.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign an owner's endorsement form for the city-owned properties within the new Middletown Transportation Center.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to revise the list of parks contained in Chapter 348 to include certain parks that have not been listed and extend the chapter's protection of those parks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Mayor?
If Dave Madden could please join me up here. Is Dave still here? Hey, maybe the rest of your crew there too, Dave. What we are doing tonight, over the past, I guess, 11 years, past 11 years, the Run for Downtown has basically adopted the little park area next to Something Sweet. And we've always referred to it as Something Sweet Park. I'm sure Dave has appreciated that in the past as a landmark. But to his credit and to the credit of his wife, Anna, they've made a focus on improving with the proceeds of the Run for Downtown, which is dedicated to improving the entire downtown. They have made several investments throughout the whole downtown, some in that little park area there. And it's not through Dave and Anna, they're part of it, but it's the whole Run for Downtown Committee. So we've always, you know, it was called the Post Office Park, and Mr. Massey probably knows some more names. Is that Wallace Park?
At one time.
At one time, it was Wallace, so we're...I spoke in the last meeting. What was it?
Why'd you pick on me?
Because you're the oldest one here. Maybe not the best memory, but you're the oldest one here. But so we decided to, once and for all, rename the park, give it a real name, and what better organization to honor for the work that they continue to do there? This year's project, I believe, is a stage in the back where they do the Thursday night concerts, and the clock, I know the clock alone was $26,000, the pavers, and some of the other projects they've done, I believe at the North Street entrance, the signage there. They did some work, you know, the clock was supposed to go on King Street, but the city chose to have it relocated. But overall, the organization itself has made such a heavy commitment to our city. The runners meet there on a weekly or monthly basis, I'm not sure if it's weekly or monthly, but every morning you see people now gather around the clock at 7:00 a.m. doing meditation, whatever it is, but it's become a focal point of our downtown area. So we proposed at the last meeting, and you guys had, and ladies, although Kate's not here tonight, to agreed to rename the park. So this is a small way of saying thank you to Dave, Anna, and all your members, and acknowledge, you know, all of you have done for the past 11 years and to keep up the good work. So thank you very much, and I'm sure that the resolution is going to pass. So thank you.
Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit? Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Move.
All moved.